17th, 2020. And just by way of preamble, to remind people that due to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public bodies are able to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing by conducting public meetings remotely, and in this case, over Zoom. The public self has access via Zoom, or, and of course, watching meetings and information on how to access meetings is provided in the meeting notices. Also, I would just like to announce who's with us today. So I'm Melinda Collins, I'm the Chair of the Select Board. And Katie Conlin is Vice Chair. Arthur Doyle, Secretary. Michael Zulis is a member. And Richard Wells is not able to join us this evening. He's teaching a course, but he'll be with us tomorrow for our meeting. So our Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy, is with us, as is Hillary Waite, who is the Executive Administrative Assistant to the Board. And our meeting host from MATB, also our MCA C rep, Tom Doherty. So welcome and thank you. Also, just to remind people, I think most people are aware that the meetings are recorded as a longstanding practice. And we'll be taking votes by roll call. And if people are not, can't hear, or members aren't audible, you know, please speak up. Very good. So I would like to call the meeting to order, 7:05. And if people would join us in saying the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. So before the Board moves on with its discussion of the draft letter, we'll have public comment, and then we'll move on. Anyone who wishes to make a statement, if you are on Zoom on your computer, you can use your mouse to, or the trackpad, go down to the bottom center of your screen and click Raise Hand. And then you'll be recognized. And at that point, you'll be able to unmute yourself. And for those who are on the phone, you would press *9 to raise your hand. And then press *6 when you're recognized to unmute yourself and unmute yourself again. And just for a reminder for all of us that we support the stability in this space. And we're saying from interrupting each other while we're sleeping. Okay. So, let me bring the participants back up. And the first person is Robert Gunderson. If you could please give us your address and your statement, please. Everyone will have three minutes.
Madam Chair, the user is using an older version of Zoom that requires me to promote them for them to be able to speak. Is that okay with you?
Oh, okay. And I'll keep time and remind people when their three minutes is up. I can't see. Let's see.
Mr. Gunderson, you've been promoted to panelist, so you should now have permission to go on video and unmute.
Excellent. Thank you. Hello, could you please state your address and then give us your statement? Hello? Hello, Robert Gunderson? Hello? Hillary, can you hear me speaking to you?
I can. It appears the speaker has left the camera view, so.
Hello? This is Judith Gunderson. I'm using Robert Gunderson's computer because mine is not functioning today.
Oh, okay. Hello?
Hi.
So may we have your address and your statement, please?
Sure. 32 Woodchester Drive, Milton, Mass.
Thank you.
My statement is that I'm commenting about the EA draft. I have 57 pages, and I see no mention of the ANAC Milton Advisory Committee airplanes. And I don't understand why they were not included. In addition, there are a lot of mistakes, statements made here that have been refuted in the past but are still being stated. Examples are landing gear and DNL. They're simply not right information. Third, expecting Quincy and Braintree to accept part of our burden will not fly. I'm sorry, pun unintended. We need to ask that 4R and 4L share the volume. Logan is not moving. It's not going anyplace. The airplanes are not going anyplace. They're going to come back to the pre-COVID numbers, which range anywhere from the high 100s to over 500 a day. But right now, or before COVID, 4R gets nine times the amount of traffic as 4L. And failure to relocate some of that traffic is really a doom for the resale value of Milton homes here. Finally, I think you need to understand that the FAA is a technical agency. When your information is technically wrong, they will stop reading what you have written and ignore you. You can spend 100 pages on legalistic and documentary elocutionary drama, but you will have lost them at the get-go. And that's the end of my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next person is Cindy Christensen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, just before Dr. Christensen offers comment, if I could just point out, we have received Dr. Christensen's written comments and on the subject matter of tonight's meeting. And those written comments contain the same type of personal attacks and invective that have become all too common in some of her submissions. Now, the members of the Board have signed up for that. If Dr. Christensen wants to say things about us, so be it. But our hardworking volunteers did not sign up for that. And this Board cannot sit idly by while Dr. Christensen continues personal attacks and invective directed at our appointee, Mr. Doherty. It is not courteous. It is not civil. And it is not appropriate, particularly for this Board's public comment. So my suggestion and proposal is that if Dr. Christensen engages in those types of personal attacks and invective directed at Mr. Doherty again tonight, that we move on to the next speaker.
I hear what you have to say, Mr. Zulis. And it is public comment, and people are able, under the First Amendment and Article 16, to say what they will until it's proven that it's defamatory. So, you know, everybody gets their three minutes. That's important. And, but I do hear what you're saying. Okay. Dr. Christensen, would you please give us your address and your statement?
This is Cindy Christensen, 59 Collimer Street, Milton. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 7. And before my three minutes begins, I would like to comment on what Mr. Zulis said. After the way this Board, everyone except on this Board, except for Arthur Doyle, treated me when I was a town volunteer, I think what you just said, Mr. Zulis, is highly hypocritical and disrespectful. We'll begin with my statement. Clearly, a lot of work has gone into the draft comment letter. However, relying on legalese without your arguments being secured to this fundamental technical knowledge, this Select Board will not slay the FAA Goliath with this letter. And you'll miss an opportunity that could be helpful to those you represent. The FAA is a technical agency. Your letter is not technically correct in many ways. There are fatal flaws and other significant problems in the arguments presented. These were preventable. Several Milton residents with more knowledge than you offered to be part of the Citizens Committee this Board asked the Town Administrator to organize back in January. That didn't happen. To my knowledge, you did not consult with your Airplane Noise Advisory Committee members, but instead have relied upon one Milton resident, your MCA C representative, to provide expertise in technical areas where he clearly is not an expert. I wrote to you with my comments over the weekend. I will not repeat from here. But I want the public to know that I have tried again to help the residents of Milton by trying to share my knowledge and expertise, both of which have not been welcomed by this Board. In 2012 legislation, Congress mandated the implementation of RNFs at major airports. The FAA will not let what Milton wants trump federal law, especially when they can show safety and efficiency improvement, less environmental noise, and no significant impact. So what should the town's response to the draft EA include? Number one, I've said this before, a request for runway use restrictions on 4R and 4L. Number two, an increased offset of 15 degrees for the 4L path with no straight-in 4L. And you also should ask for close to equal split between the approaches to 4R and 4L. These suggestions would be helpful to those in the sandwich between 4R and 4L paths and also to East Milton residents while not giving more than their share to Milton residents west of the 4R path. In 2019, there were nine jet approaches to 4R for every one approach to 4L. That isn't fair to those under the 4R path, an area that this Board also is. Advocating for a near split would show that Milton is willing to disperse planes over its own town as a model for how flight path decision should be made across town boundaries. Expecting other communities to our east to increase their noise burden, but not expecting the same in the quieter areas in Milton is hypocritical and detrimental to the cause. And if you're going to try to say, "But the MIST study will disperse the overexposed 4Rs", no one should believe that. Both Quincy and Braintree have opposed Milton's proposals. And my guess is that Wayman, Kingham, and others are not far behind. You also are missing an opportunity because you should be encouraging the FAA to increase the uncharted left transition use of this to be implemented 4L RNF. The FAA has a good efficiency argument for using more of that transition, which could substantially reduce the approaches to 4R. That should be part of your lengthy comment.
Thank you. I don't see one more person, but I don't see other hands raised. Anyone else wishes to speak? Yeah, okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to the Board portion. So first, I would like to say that the Board is very appreciative of all appointees. And I would really personally like to thank Mr. Doherty for his work, not just on this, but since he's joined us. And Mr. Zulis and Ms. Conlin for their work on the letter, as well as the ANAC Chair, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, for those of you who are kind of new to them, and the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee for their participation with comments and drafting. And Charis North, who's our Council, who specializes in airplane and environmental issues. So I'm really appreciative of all this work. And we've received some letters that also I'm very appreciative for, good points and constructive comments and also support. So good to have all of those as well. I would like to, at the moment, pass it on to Mr. Zulis. He and Ms. Conlin have been busy with our state, and actually, Mr. Dennehy too. They're state and federal legislators. And he'll give us a little overview and some background before he turns it over to Mr. Doherty. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The FAA has proposed to use the runway 4L flight path, which takes planes directly over Dorchester, Mattapan, and part of Milton, as an unfettered RNF, which would effectively create another superhighway in the sky with plane after plane after plane going over the same neighborhoods. Now, as part of the adoption of the 4L RNF path, the FAA is purported to engage in an environmental assessment process and has produced a draft environmental assessment, which, with the appendices, numbers in hundreds of pages. Comments on the draft environmental assessment are due this Friday, November 20. Now, the draft comments that are before this Board tonight, which number in about 57 pages, and then there's an appendix to go along with it. This was the result, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, of the combined efforts of Katie Conlin, Andy Schmidt of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, who also published the draft to the other ANAC members, as I understand, Charis North from our Town Council's office, Tom Doherty, as you mentioned, our Massport CAC representative, myself, and residents who have submitted comments. The comments reflect the overall views that the procedure and methodology for the environmental assessment have been fundamentally flawed and that the draft environmental assessment and the related workshops have included material misstatements and omissions from the FAA. These reasons, the comments state that the environmental assessment process should be canceled and rescinded and that the draft environmental assessment should be withdrawn. Now, we have sought and we are seeking support of elected officials at the federal, state, and local level for these comments. Thus far, Senator Timmeltie, Representative Driscoll, Boston City Councilor Andrea Campbell of District 4, which covers parts of Dorchester and Mattapan, have signed on to these comments. And we hope and expect to have more signatories before we submit them this week. And so, to give an overview, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, of the highlights of the comments, I'll now ask Mr. Doherty to go through that. To go through that. And I think we're going to have Hillary share the document itself, or at least the beginning of it.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis and Madam Chair and the Select Board. And Ms. Waite, if you could take and turn to the fourth page of this, 457. That'll, thank you. I'll use, obviously, I will try to give an overview and some highlights and not try to burden anyone with, or overburden anyone with too much detail. But what I'll do then is to begin with the fact that the FAA states that it needs the RNF path for two reasons. And first of all, the 4L path is and has been a visual path only. So the first statement that the FAA makes is that they have a safety need. And the second is that they have an efficiency need for converting that into the availability of an RNF path for certain purposes. And I'll go through that. Safety need and efficiency need. But this started, as you can see on this page, and I'm not going to go through in every detail, in 2015-16, where there was a so-called Initial Environmental Report, and initially, a determination by the FAA that adding a hyper-concentrated RNF path to the extant 4L path approach would have no significant environmental impact, noise, or pollution, et cetera. That was their initial view. And that, in response to that, there was significant community involvement. Some of you will remember the May 2015 meeting. You'll remember Congressman Lynch, Senator Timmeltie, Representative Driscoll, Cullenane, the Select Board, and scores of residents saying, "Wait a minute." We challenged this essentially. That's reviewed and summarized at the beginning there, 2015-16. And at that point, the FAA committed that it would conduct an environmental assessment. And then, for years, did nothing. During 2016 and 2017, 2018, into 2019, of course, planes were flying, unlike now, but they saw no reason for either a safety need or an efficiency need to proceed. Then we get to 2020. And actually, in late 2019, December, they said, "We're going to go ahead with an environmental assessment." And at that point, of course, planes were flying. They said they would use a baseline year for comparative purposes of October 2018 to November 1, 2019. And they would be then proceeding apace. At that point, one of the things I did was ask them to define with regard to 4L, runway 4L arrivals, what the status was as to the types of approach methodologies that are being used. That is to say, it's a visual path only. The RNF was proposed to be a so-called poor weather path, inclement meteorological conditions path. And there was, in 2000, as we know, 1415 timeframe, the JetBlue path, which is to the west side of Milton, over Mattapan, over Dorchester. So I asked, "Look, you're going to need to be clear about what is going to happen with respect to that JetBlue path." They came back and said, "It's been discontinued. But we'll see as we go forward what the remaining questions are as to that." So that was in January. And I thought then, at that point, that it was going to proceed as planes were flying. But then the pandemic hit. And we, the MCA C, at my request, asked that the environmental assessment be deferred, given the fact that there are people in Milton, Mattapan, Dorchester, all of whom, obviously, affected by the COVID-19. Many of them are essential workers, some at hospitals. Everyone has, you know, home care and other concerns. And the response was, "No, we're going to go forward, even though in response to my letter and the MCA C's letter in May, planes will, the utilization will pick up. And so we're going to go forward." But of course, that wasn't the case. There were fewer, there were five planes in May, I think. In June, I think there might have been seven. In August, back to five. And nine in September, as I recall, on 4L. It just was inappropriate. Three times, there were requests. And those requests were joined in by the Select Board, by Congressman Lynch, by Senator Timmeltie, by Representative Driscoll, to defer. Every single time, "No" was the answer. With regard to safety, in one of those requests, I specifically included this statement, "You've not particularized your safety rationale for proceeding." So we're going to come to that in a second. Then on November 15, they proceeded. It's a footnote, but what we said was, if you are going to proceed, which you should not, you can't do what you did in your other recent environmental assessments down in Florida, which is to have a 30-day comment period and release the draft midway through the comment period. You should have a longer comment period and release it at the beginning. And they did do that. And it was the only thing they actually did responsive to what we were requesting. So that began, and there was a meeting promptly with the elected officials and the FAA, including Congressman Lynch. And at that meeting, the Regional Director, Regional Administrator of the FAA stated that the elected officials could submit technical questions that would be answered at the so-called workshops. And they should be submitted. And we're free to do that. The Congressman Lynch, Senator Timmeltie, Representative Driscoll, the Select Board submitted technical questions promptly. And then we're told that there would not be responses to them provided at the workshop. And to this, and to this day, there have not been responses to those, except for one minor thing. But on the particular important questions which are laid out in this draft, no response. Now, then we go forward. And I would want to talk about the three important aspects of the draft. That is to say, the scope of this environmental assessment, its methodology, and its nontransparency. As it says there in this summary, "The scope fails to differentiate its general study area from an approach study area." Let me stop there. What this draft, this environmental assessment does is it takes for a general study area and no other area. That's the only area it uses. And it looks across 1,173 square miles of area and all 427,000 Logan flight operations as it might affect over 1 million people. Now, for purposes of overall air traffic compatibility, to make sure that this added approach is compatible with all the other arrivals and departures, that makes sense. But for purposes of understanding what the noise effect on the people subject to this approach procedure, the 4L RNF. approach procedure, the 4L RNAV, it's completely arbitrary, capricious, and makes no sense. The study area that they're using includes, you know, locations such as Wellesley and Hopkinton and Medford and Sherburne and Ashland. In other words, many places who are not within the approach path of these, of this runway and its comparable runway, the 4R runway, the CSPR. And by CSPR, it means it's a closely spaced parallel runway. What's that approach path? The FAA itself acknowledges that if you look just south of the Blue Hills, say, like the Route 93 area, they have the 4L and the 4R initial fixes, those waypoints. And they, on the 4L, the planes will approach down to the 4L runway, and 4R, approach down to the 4R. At the runway point, those two runway center points are 1,500 feet apart, 1,500 feet apart. At the Blue Hills area, where the approach path initiates, they're only 4,500 feet apart, and they reduce by approximately 200 feet in width per mile. So that the square mile area that we're talking about, and that the, for approach, and the population underneath that, is nothing like what they're looking at with respect to the widespread area they're looking at for air traffic purposes, and yet they're using it for noise impact purposes, where the square mile area is something like 23 square miles in the population, a fraction of the million in the other total area. That has big impacts, that scope defect, arbitrary defect, failure to differentiate and to use two modalities for the air traffic compatibility, that general scope, and what I would call an approach scope, approach scope area that looks at that approach path corridor and the noise contours both within it, as they overlap, 4L and 4R noise that people understand and experience is shared, and they experience effects of both, but also the contours for 4L to the west and 4R to the east. And the comments here point out, A, that this environmental assessment doesn't take the contours into account, even though the FAA has statements, and it's in the draft comments, as to when and how they will take those contours into account. They don't do that. And the FAA, then, in addition to not taking into account the contours, fails analytically, then, in terms of its noise measurements, and we'll come to that. Similarly, within those contours are so-called noise-sensitive areas. Those include residents, but they also include libraries, schools, churches, hospitals. And as you know, right in just Reginald Road area, you've got St. Elizabeth's, you've got Beth Israel. Beyond that, you've got the library, but you also, down from there, you've got Milton Academy. That triangle alone is one requiring some special attention. They don't do that at all. So they fail to differentiate the study area purposes from air traffic compatibility and noise impact, and they ignore those CSPR realities. They're also supposed to look at cumulative impacts under the National Environmental Protection Act, and they, again, they don't do that either for the reasons that are analogous. And Hillary, if you can scroll down a little bit for the rest of this page, I'll go to the next part, which is methodology. Hillary, do that. Just wait a second. What I'd like to do is to keep going. Let me keep... Okay, yeah, fine. Well, no, back to... Yeah, you'll see the word... Yeah, five methodologies. Let's just... Let's keep going there. So, methodology. What they're doing is, they are not defining the permitted use. We'll start there. So what they say is, "We need this for safety reasons and efficiency reasons because 4L path is a visual path. It's not a path that can be used in bad weather." And so, for safety reasons, we need it to use it in bad weather, and for efficiency reasons, we need to, because in the bad weather, there are delays on 4R, which has an RNAV path, procedure, that itself is not able to then shift planes as bad weather occurs onto and over onto 4L to pick up and reduce those delays. And so, for an efficiency reason, they need it as well. So, first of all, they then say, "The number of planes that they may want to, and will, as they measure it, shift are 255 planes a year, 255 planes a year." But they say that that is going to occur without saying that that's the limit, that the permitted use will only be on the inclement days, as they've measured them, which are called eligible inclement days, and the 255 planes derives from their measurement definition of eligible. Their eligible definition is six consecutive hours of bad weather, or eight out of 10. And they say there are seven days of those a year, and so that will be 255 additional planes that would be shifted over onto 4L. Now, I question that, and I'll come to that in a minute, but is that the limit? They nowhere say, and they've been asked repeatedly by the elected officials and others, "Is that the limit? Are you saying that you will only use this in IMC conditions, bad weather conditions, and that you expect and can show that that's the degree of delay, 255 flights?" Nowhere do they say, "No, we will not use it in any other conditions." And now, the eligible flights that they say, these seven per year, are inconsistent and incompatible with our actual experience. There are 130 days a year of recorded rain conditions, and if they're looking at the delay issue, why don't they look at the Department of Transportation Bureau of Statistics Delay Statistic for 2019, which shows that there are not seven days of delay, but 5% of the flights total are delayed, and 5% of the flights on 4R, 4L, sorry, would be 3,600, not 255. Because although Logan reports the jets that arrive on 4L, and they say that that's around, you know, say, 5,800, 6,000 a year, there are another 6,000 of propeller planes that arrive. And so, there's no clarity whatsoever on what limit there is to the permitted use, and there's, I think, no fair fundamental basis for the assumption that there are only seven eligible days in relation to the actual delays that we're experiencing. And they don't use the actual delays to begin with. So, they don't also, as these technical questions that the elected officials asked, provide a table, which even in the environmental, initial environmental report that they did, they had a table, and it said, "Here's, in visual conditions, how many planes we expect to be used, first year, second year, whatever. Here's, in inclement meteorological conditions, here's how many planes we expect to be used, and whether they're cleared, use or so-called advisory use." And I'll stop and insert this here. Remember, I mentioned JetBlue, and I mentioned asking the question, "What uses they're going to be of the 4L path on any basis?" Remember, they want to have a 4LRNAV, and they're saying it's only 255 planes, and I challenge that. But secondly, what about the use on an advisory basis, where, as they said in response to the question, "Well, if a airline has in its flight management system a path that it is itself used, and it wants to create and use that glide slope and that path, that would be permissible." And if that's the case, then either JetBlue or other airlines could use, on a visual day, on an inclement day, they could use a narrow path in addition to this 4R RNAV path, or they could use the RNAV path itself. That set of requests for a table for clarity was not answered and still not answered. All right, I'll speed up a little bit, but on the efficiency assumption, if you read it, I think you'd get a kick out of this. So it turns out that the efficiency assumption, when I asked them, put us into the picture. Tell us, what is the basis for your efficiency claim, and what's the basis for your safety claim? On the safety claim, just to take a second, they said, finally, in the draft EA, "Well, since 2016, we have three instances, one in 2016, and two in 2019, of three small propeller planes. Two of those were Havilins, one was Essena. And in each case, the plane was coming in from the west toward runway 15R, and then circled down instead, in visual conditions, to land on 15... I'm sorry, on 4L. Okay? So coming in on 15R, but then circled down from the west, and then circled down to come in instead on 4R. That was permitted. It happened. But in each instance, these are propeller planes that had no GPS identified as onboard, and so it's not ones that would be using an RNAV path anyway. It was in visual conditions, not in bad weather IMC conditions, which is what the RNAV is designed for and said to be going to be used for. And in each one of these, they were in visual contact with the airport. One of them was flying too fast, and so it had to circle around. So that's no basis to proceed and try to burden people with an RNAV when, in fact, for IMC conditions, bad weather conditions, when, in fact, they only have examples of three planes in clear conditions. And lastly, even though they wouldn't have to have an RNAV in order to address all that, in the appendix D to the draft, which you have to get through by going through hundreds of, or scores of pages to get to, they actually say that, actually, they don't intend to continue the use of that coming into 15 and then turn R, and then turning down approach anyway. So there is no safety need demonstrated, and there's no clarity. I'll come to the lack of clarity in the disclosures here, but there's no clarity in this document that allows people to understand that by reading it in a succinct way. And so I don't think that need is substantiated, nor do I think is it communicated in a materially complete way. On the efficiency need, they said it would reduce the delay in the bad weather, and I've mentioned the fact that the delays are not even part of their measurement, and so I won't go back to that. But they don't limit it, as I've said, to delays in terms of its use. All right, so then, next, let's talk about, and I'll try to speed up a bit, but let's talk about the use of their metric, the so-called DNL metric. DNL is a yearly average noise metric for day and night decibel level on a yearly average basis. So if you think about it, the planes on runways 4L and 4R are operating 34% of the year. Logan publishes that statistic religiously. It's undisputed. But the DNL metric uses all the days in the year. We've talked about this before. And therefore, will take a situation like 4L and 4R, which are in use 121 days, about a third of the year, let's use that, and will take the noise effect that those planes in use create, but add 0000 for other days, all the other days of the year when they're not in use, and put that into a so-called average annual day. So you know that, to begin with, that that, therefore, will dilute significantly the noise impact, and it does. And to follow up on that, what I did was to ask the FAA for access to their AEDT noise model, so that it could understand how they were calculating that average annual day in use and the number of planes that would be in the baseline year on 4L. As the, I'll call it, the components from which they then derive their DNL metric. And for example, over Milton Hill, and I also asked for over that triangle between St. Elizabeth's and Beth Israel and Milton Academy. Let's take the first. When you take 4L and 4R together and you look at the noise effect that they're trying to track over Milton Hill, they will say that, well, there are over 150 planes that are there on the average annual day, so stop there. That means a third of the year, right? So you would multiply that, and you'd say, "Yes, that's actually consistent with the experience of people on Milton Hill, that on the days of use, it can be up to over 450 planes." Why? Because there'll be planes at 180 miles an hour, that's three miles a minute, that's... Essentially, when you're looking out, that's, you'll be seeing planes come over you repeatedly, and that 151 is actually only a fraction of the total, given that they then add a zero to each day when not in use, and coming up with their metric of DNL based on that. Now, MIT, and I'll only take a second, MIT itself said, "For purposes of RNAV analysis, purposes of RNAV noise analysis, a better metric is to look at the so-called number of flights above a certain decibel level, 25 or, I'm sorry, 25 flights or 50 flights above a certain decibel level, and that decibel level will be 60 decibels by day and 50 decibels by night. And if you apply that to in-use flight patterns, then you find that there are, you know, on the case of, again, say Milton Hill, 4L, 4R, that's where you get the 450 flights on a, on a, on a, in-use basis, 150 on a yearly average basis. But on a yearly average basis, 150 flights, if you include all those days when there are flights not happening, and even then, the average comes out to 150 flights at 60 decibels by day and 50 decibels by night, and so the actual impact is substantially larger than that." Let me keep going, and I'll go, I'll try to speed up. They don't, as I've said before, include any noise contour analysis, which would increase that effect. They did no field work. That AEDT model is the only thing they used. I've talked about the fact that the DNL dilutes. They don't use the supplemental metric that I've just referred to. They don't use what the Department of Transportation Highway Department and the MIT study say is a perfectly appropriate supplemental metric, and the draft points out itself that the FAA's own analysis indicates that they are able to and can use supplemental metrics when appropriate, and this, we submit, is entirely the exact case where it is appropriate, and it's arbitrary not to do so. I'm almost done with this section. No wake turbulence analyses. Remarkably, as we know, when you're in, say, a small boat and a bigger boat... in, say, a small boat, and a bigger boat or a ship comes right in front of you, that wake will rock your little boat and yourself quite a bit. Well, in the air, the airplanes have a wake in the air and create waves behind them. And in connection with this EA, on the one hand, the FAA has a section on wake turbulence analyses, and it shows a diagram of how that can occur. But what they don't do is then take 4R and 4L together, and to address what the wake turbulence analysis would mean for these runways and for 4L. In their other publication, the FAA points out that what they're trying to do with the RNAV path, and here the 4L RNAV path, is to optimize the spacing laterally and horizontally between planes, such that they can increase the number of planes passing through, the throughput per hour. And the wake turbulence optimization allows the planes to be more closely spaced. So that three miles that I mentioned separation might be down to two and a half miles, or in any event, the coordination of the planes on the two runway paths will be coordinated such, if the new path is a RNAV path, that they can optimize the wake turbulence. On average, wake turbulence analysis optimization, as published by the FAA, which is cited in the draft, increases throughput 7%. And at Memphis, it increased it 15%. But if that's the case, that means that not 255 planes, and we don't even know whether they are going to be using it on visual paths or advisory basis. But in any event, optimization of wake turbulence by means of the introduction of the RNAV will have some potentially significant impact on the number of planes. And they don't address that, they don't explain that. Even though they do raise the benefits of wake turbulence analysis, nowhere do they connect it to noise impact. And then significantly, they have no discussion whatsoever of landing gear noise impacts. The landing gear when deployed, and the studies, both in Europe and the US, are cited in this draft comments, comprise 40% of the total noise impact when deployed. So knowing that, having seen the studies, which again, were referenced in one of the MIT studies, I then sent a Freedom of Information Act request in the summer, saying, look, if you're going to go ahead, which we don't want to go ahead, we want you to go ahead, I want to know what your AEDT data shows with regard to, or any other data you have with regard to the deployment of landing gear, when, for each aircraft, at what speed, at what location, relative to the touchdown with respect to 4R in the baseline year. The answer? We have no data. There is no data on that. So then, looking again at the AEDT model, I then asked them for access to that, to see to what extent in the AEDT model there was any reflected assumption, and there isn't one. So the fact of the matter is, the effect of landing gear is nowhere reflected in the environmental assessment, in terms of its determination that there's no significant impact, even with respect to reflecting it within the DNL metric, any metric you choose. Preferably, you'd also use supplemental metrics, preferably you would have a approach study area, not a general study area, but in no way is landing gear reflected. And then lastly, there's an entire section on the important aspects of what I call non-transparency here, incomplete statements, selective disclosure. As I've mentioned, the purpose and the need for the proposed action need to be clarified, because the safety need is asserted, but it seems to be contradicted by the actual examples, and needs to be further articulated, so people can understand that those planes were in visual conditions, they were in visual contact, they themselves, the FAA, are dropping that procedure, that circular procedure. So why is this a need with regard to the scope? There's really no articulation of this differentiation, and why is they're using an undifferentiated general study area for one purpose, which is, you know, air traffic coordination, that's fine, but then also using it for an approach, which is, you know, not 1,173 square miles, not a million people, not 470,000 procedures. The methodology I've talked about, again, there's failure to disclose, there are no flight track charts, no table, as I've mentioned, no statement, is this IMC only, is no statement, is this 255 only? If not, what is it? No sort of differentiation of cleared or advisory use during visual conditions or inclement conditions, nothing about landing gear or the absence thereof, and no response to the technical questions which overlap a lot of those areas that I mentioned. So I'll stop there. I hope I haven't gone on too long. And I would ask people to, you know, read the draft comments in their entirety. It's hard to read the draft EA in its entirety, it takes a long time, but I would encourage you to do as much of that as you can as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. I think that, on behalf of the board, that we appreciate your summary, and as well as all the work that everyone's put into this. I would ask the members if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Doherty, or before we have our discussion. And actually, you and Arthur, we could also ask Katie and Mike questions, too, since they worked on this.
Madam Chair, I noticed we have a resident with a hand up, and I don't know if that resident came in late, if that's possible. I don't know if you want to take any additional comment or question.
Right.
I see a couple of other names that I don't think were there at the beginning, so people may have joined late.
Right, they were here before we went to our part of the meeting, and I had waited for a little while. But since they haven't spoken before, I'm certainly happy to take their comment. If you would, please state your name or names, if it's both of you, and your address, and make your statement, please. Mr. and Mrs. McGonigal, sorry, or I shouldn't say that, I'm not sure that's who it is. Owen and Kathy McGonigal, my apologies.
Sorry, sorry, I had to unmute. It's just Kathy McGonigal. I live at 27 Center Street in Milton. Actually, my legal name is Catherine Sheedy McGonigal, sorry. I just want to say, to Mr. Doherty, this is a tremendous amount of work. I read through the entire letter, I thought it was terrific. I did attend one of the FAA meetings, and that was the first time, I thought it was a total dog and pony show, I was incredibly disappointed. It was upsetting, honestly. But it was the first time I heard the mention of the word "safety." And I'm an attorney, I did take an Ad Law class in law school, it was exceptionally painful. And I understand, like, when you're writing this letter, reading through it, you know, you were very careful with your language. But when they brought in that whole safety argument, I was very concerned by this, because if my memory serves me right, I don't know, I'm asking a question, is this beyond just an arbitrary and capricious standard? Are they now able to implement this 4L because it's a higher level of scrutiny? Maybe I'm not using the right jargon, but do you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm concerned that the arbitrary capricious standard is not the standard they're going to use.
Well, I think that the FAA would also accord...
You know what I'm saying, or am I not? I'm not articulating it well, because I don't know what I'm talking about.
No, no, I hear you, I hear you. So with regard to the exercise of discretion to assert that this is necessary for safety reasons, the standard would be an arbitrary capricious standard. And we could go through that, but it's not going to be a higher standard than that. And on the other hand, and as you read, with regard to the disclosures, that's a different standard. It's a standard that Justice Marshall, for example, articulated, you know, long ago, and has been followed. That is to say, if there's a material omission or misstatement, you know, the judge is not going to defer to the discretion of the provider of the information, because it's an objective standard. And the judge is going to, he or she is going to say, okay, what is a reasonable recipient of this information going to understand? And does the stated information contain information that is important and reasonably significant for a full understanding without omission or misstatement? And that's an objective standard that the court will look to without deferring to the FAA's asserted belief that they believe that it's reasonable as to what they've said or not said. The court will look at that. And so it's the difference between the former and the latter with regard to the exercise of discretion in determining under their own models and methods whether or not this is needed for safety. The court's appropriately going to say, well, okay, but let's see whether or not there is a rational relationship, or is this arbitrary and capricious?
Because, like, they admitted they haven't even been to Milton. They collected no soil samples, they have collected no actual noise models, they've done nothing. Everything's used of algorithms, and it's basically conjecture, like scientific conjecture, but I wouldn't even argue that it's scientific. But what do you hope to accomplish by this letter? Because I feel like it's a done deal after attending that FAA meeting. Like, what do you hope to accomplish with this? Like, will there be...
Several things, several things. Let me start with that, with the, just as you mentioned at the workshop. Just in terms of presentation alone, there is, and I use the comparison in the draft. Once upon a time, when companies were raising capital in the public marketplace, they would have what are called, and still have what are called, roadshows, which are oral supplements, in this case, a Zoom supplement, to their written assessment, right, their written offering. Right, well, those roadshows are regulated by the SEC, and they are pre-cleared by the SEC, and the Securities and Exchange Commission, and that's the watchdog there. Here, the citizens themselves need to be that watchdog, because there is no independent watchdog looking over the disclosures of the FAA. So starting there, I've said it right in that draft, I think that the workshops are sort of equivalent to a pre-regulated roadshow, where they aren't complete, they're formulaic, and they themselves didn't answer the questions asked with regard, for example, to the technical questions and others, but also aren't providing the kind of information such as, you know, is this meteorologic conditions only, you know, bad weather only, is it, you know, 255 only, is it all of those missing for completeness purposes issues? So what do we hope to accomplish here? As it says right at the beginning, this should be rescinded, and start over, go to a full environmental impact statement, and take the time and use the methodology and transparency of effort that is requisite, rather than this.
Right, but they're not going to do that. So do you envision, like, I have absolutely no hope, like, despite all your wonderful work, do you envision an administrative law hearing? Like, would that be when they deny this request, which I'm sure they will?
I think it would be premature to state publicly
All right.
what I would do. And I don't, it's not my decision, anyway, but I think it would be premature to...
All right, fair enough.
But what we're trying to do is create a basis for action by the SEC, by the FAA, and then make determinations based on whether that happens or not.
Right. Do you think we should be collecting any of our own data, like our own soil samples, our own noise monitoring, like, have our own independent investigator?
I guess I would leave that to the select board. That would be quite a resource commitment, you know, even cities like, you know, Medford and others, Somerville, you know, with much more heavily populated cities, I'm not sure I've seen that.
I think there should be a collaborative approach, like, that's what I feel like is lacking. Like, it's not going to magically, like, oh, just shift. I do think that we should be working with other towns, and I know that is a tough reach, but I really do think that in a fairness level, it's not going to be solved unless it's a regional approach. Like, it can't just be Milton's problem.
Oh, yes, Congressman Lynch leads the Fierce Guys Caucus, and has done a good job. There have been revised statutes presented, and I worked on one with Senators Markey and Warren in 2018. Went through, it went through the House, but at the Senate level, the Republican Chair would not push it forward. So depending upon future political situation, that multi-airport, multi-community revision of the statute itself is a significant priority, depending upon, you know, political outcomes.
Right, thank you.
Melinda, you're muted. What's that?
Melinda, you're still muted.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry about that. Ms. McGonigal, I'm sorry, I've been trying to tell you that your three minutes are up, and I think we've gotten a bit off topic as well. But Mr. Zulis, I also wanted to recognize you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things, to jump off, a couple of things that Kathy said. One is, you know, we began before COVID, the process of more data collection with the environmental monitor that we purchased. Now, we only purchased one, that was $10,000, and, you know, the hope is, and the need is, to purchase more of those in order to collect enough data. And with respect to the original approach, on this project, for this proposed 4L RNAV, the affected communities are Dorchester and Matapan and the part of Milton, and we have reached out and gotten support from the Boston City Councilor, whose district includes Matapan and Dorchester. We're hopeful to have another one, and I think we will have another one sign on as well. And we have certainly the state senator and the state representative who cover the larger districts. So we're trying to get a regional approach, and I think you're absolutely right, that that's really important for us to do going forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Any statements you'd like to make about the, or additional statements you'd like to make about the letter?
Madam Chair, I'll just reiterate the thanks to Mr. Doherty and to others who worked on the letter, and also to our state and federal... and to others who worked on the letter, and also to our state and federal elected officials and colleagues in the city of Boston who have signed on to the letter, as, you know, as Mike Zulis said. So I think it's consistent with what our arguments have been previously. There were some comments made at Citizens Speak about moving 4R traffic onto 4L, which has never been the town's position. Communities like Quincy and Braintree used to have more air traffic over them. And unfortunately, that traffic has been moved over Milton. So the dispersion over other communities and making this, you know, the airport is a, is a benefit to the region, and the entire region needs to share in the burden of the airport, not just our community and other communities that are affected by other runway paths. So this is a unique situation with closely spaced parallel runways. We have a swath of our town that's between the two paths and impacted by both of them. And I think we're doing, you know, we're handling 4R in one way. We've had the MIT study propose some additional paths that can be explored for that. And the comments on the 4LEA, I think, raise a lot of good points. And I want to reiterate again, thanks to Tom and all who, including Karis North and Andy Schmidt, everyone who worked on the letter, and the residents who have either contacted us, contacted us by email or by phone to share their thoughts on it. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further discussion, and I think that Ms. Conlin and Mr. Zulis expressed the gratitude of, of the board. But I'll say that definitely my, my gratitude to our state and federal elected officials for all they have done so far and, and that continued, continued cooperation. So at that, at this point, I will propose a motion. I, I will also say that this is on our agenda tomorrow. Since Mr. Wells can't be with us today, we could either re-vote, or he could say that he is in support of the letter so that he could also sign it. Because I, I think that it would be good for us to actually, you know, all sign the letter rather than using electronic signatures or, or leaving one of us out. Mr. Doyle? Oh, you're muted, Mr. Doyle.
There we go, it took a moment. I apologize for that. I just had a couple of observations or comments, if I may, Madam Chair. I would like to add my agreement with what you, you said to the work that's been done by so many people so long and well before the time that I had the privilege of joining the select board. I would suggest, I do not know who all the copy recipients of this will be, but I would suggest, as he was referenced in conversation, that Senator Markey certainly be included since he sits on the Subcommittee on Transportation and Safety of the Senate Committee that has oversight for the Federal Aviation Administration. On page 53, I believe, yes, page 53, I would like to suggest that no numbers appear for the year 2020, really that a statement indicating the impact of COVID-19 be entered or 2020 be eliminated altogether. I, I don't think it's useful to have any numeracy there whatsoever. But again, that's just my opinion. I would quote that, any of the comments that will support or reinforce the document received tonight orally or beforehand in writing, evaluated for that purpose. And I just wanted to ask where it stated a number of times of which being used preciously arbitrarily, et cetera. If, if this is a, if this is something that we believe is purposeful on the part of the FAA, that would be my observation, we should say so. That if this is a total force, we should be very explicit about that. I concur with Kathy McGonigal's observations about the FAA presentation. And those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Doyle, if I could clarify, so you were talking about the first draft, page 53, is that correct?
I've, I have several of them.
The one dated the 10th of November?
I have November 18, 2020, at the heading of the one that I'm referring to.
Okay.
But I think I saw it in the, too. So if we, if we do have data for 2020, I would suggest that that not be included. But that's just my opinion. This is, this is with reference to the enumeration over time of the noise complaints.
Right, the complaint data. So I'm just trying to understand. My understanding is to illustrate the effect of the pandemic and also that this really isn't the time. I, I mean, to me, I thought it landed, it illustrated that this was not an illustrative time of actual air traffic. And therefore, it renders the EA process, you know, not credible. So I, I may be misunderstanding the, the, why that was included, but.
I'm just turning to, I agree with you, the, the, the point is that we're in a lull, and you can look, yeah?
Yeah, I think, I think without that, the point is a bit more difficult to see, but.
I, I think right above that, Arthur, too. I'm looking at the November 12th version, it does mention the pandemic significantly curtailed air traffic globally. So that might give more context to it.
I just think the presence of the number speaks more loudly than the sentence.
Okay, I guess it would be helpful to, to me if we could get the exact sentence. So are we talking about, for example, the carryover sentence since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic at the bottom of page 52?
It's the sentence, the paragraph that begins specifically in Milton, and then continues on, as Katie said, when the pandemic significantly curtailed air traffic globally. Then you have the table with the heading, total number of noise complaints filed by year in Milton. At the bottom, it starts with 2012, and at the top with 2020. You have the drop from 2019 of 41,000 plus to 2020 showing 1,634. And I, I think that works against the message you want to convey and what you want the readers to understand. But again, it's just my opinion, but in working with data for years and years, you either want to eliminate that type of disparity or difference, or be very careful that all audiences understand what it means very explicitly.
Yeah, I've got it now. So, I mean, for example, what maybe we can do is track down that the 1,634 are pre, are pre-COVID. In other words, in the first, in the first, in other words, the planes were flying in January and February. They weren't, they stopped flying by April. So it could be, it could, we could, we could try to address the time, or just drop it.
I'll, I'll leave it to you to decide, I just want to make the observation for consideration.
Yeah, it's great, thanks for, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
I think Section 10B was the one that still needed to be either filled in or, or the placeholder taken out just regarding residents' comments. So.
Right.
I, I think if we wanted to vote this tonight, we could approve it substantially, the form that it's in. And then we could just, just ask if that be finalized prior to submitting it tomorrow.
On, on site, prior to?
Prior to submitting it to the FAA. I think that's just a matter of either adding letters that we've received or just taking out a placeholder.
And similarly, with regard to the 2020, if I can narrow that down to the, the pre-COVID months, I'll do it, if it's too confusing, I'll just take out 2020.
Okay, thank you. Right, I'm, I, I, I think your suggestion also, Katie, is, is a good one. That we can approve it, subject to to, to the, the proposed, the, the choices between the two changes in Section 10A. And then the either the completion or the taking out the that, that the resident comment portion prior to submission.
And, and this has already been signed, we already have signature pages from some of the elected officials. So I think those are minor changes that really are not substantive. So I'll move that we approve and sign the draft comment, well, not the draft, I move that we approve and sign the comment letter on the draft environmental assessment for runway 4L in substantially the form presented tonight with the issues that we discussed to be finalized.
Second? Second, thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? You're muted, Mr. Doyle.
I keep doing that to you, Madam Chair, my fault. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Conlin, yes. Motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Conlin, yes. Thank you, everyone who attended and watched on television. And, and also Hillary and our meeting host, I don't know who it was today, Mr. Doherty, for attending, and Mr. Dennehy as well. Thank you to the members.